Okay, we're gonna go ahead and get started. Thank you so much for your patience. And especially for your patience with our technical difficulties. My name is Sam Bernbaum. I am a project manager for Harlem River for Settlement Housing Fund, which is part of the nonprofit developer Harlem River Preservation LLC. We're really excited to welcome you to our town hall today, Thursday, November 18th. As always, I want to first start by introducing or having the translators introduce themselves on the translation lines. This meeting will be simultaneously translated into Spanish and Chinese. So if I could have the Spanish translator unmute themselves and introduce themselves, please.
Hola, buenas noches a todos, bienvenidos. Para acceder a esta reunión en español, marquen en sus teléfonos el número 646 558 8656. Nuevamente, para escuchar esta reunión en español, marquen en sus teléfonos el número 646 558 8656. Y entren el código de reunión 331 425 8640, signo numeral. El código es 331 425 8640, signo numeral. Gracias. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Ah, we're in here today is ah, our Harlem River and City Hall meeting. Ah,如果你想听普通话的翻译，请你打646 558 8656. Our phone number is 646 558 8656. Our meeting code is 461 857 9342. Say it again, our meeting code is 461 857 9342. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you so much. So just to get started, we're going to talk a bit about the format for the meeting. We mailed out paper copies of this presentation to all the households at Harlem River. If you're listening to the audio of this presentation over your phone, you can follow along using that paper presentation. We will publish a video recording of this town hall meeting on our website, www.harlemriver.org. This says by the end of next week, it'll actually be at the beginning of the week following because of the Thanksgiving holiday. But it will be up in about nine to 10 days after this meeting is completed. Everyone will be muted during the presentation portion. We will have a Q and A question and answer session at the end of the meeting. To ask a question during the Q and A, you can type your question in the webinar chat at any time. We will either type a response to you during the meeting, or we will answer the question out loud during the question and answer session at the end of the meeting. You can also, if you'd like to say your question out loud, raise your hand in Zoom. During the Q and A portion, the meeting host will call on you during that session and unmute your microphone. So you can ask. If you're using a smartphone to join this meeting, if you want to raise your hand, all you need to do is tap the screen of the Zoom meeting. A toolbar will appear. Tap Participants and then tap Raise Hand. If you're using a computer, you can move your mouse on the Zoom meeting screen to reveal a toolbar. Click Participants and click Raise Hand. And if you're calling into the meeting using a telephone and you'd like to raise your hand, dial *9 to raise your hand. And again, all raised hands, many as we can get to, will be called on at the end of the meeting during the Q and A portion. Okay, so in terms of our agenda, we're first gonna hear from Nycha a bit. Well, I'm actually sorry, Sayida, I'm actually gonna pass it over to my colleague Sayida to go through the agenda. Sayida. Sayida, can you hear us?
I'm sorry, I was muted. Okay, good evening, everyone. My name is Sayida Walls. I am also a member of the Harlem River Preservation Team. We will begin, our meeting will begin with a presentation from Nycha. And then we will have a recap of the temporary move process during construction. We will discuss the schedule for the temporary moves, job opportunities, social services, a preview of what is next, once the conversion happens, and then Q and A. So with that, we will get things started. Ian?
Hey, my, um, they're not letting me, I can't turn my video on. I think my, my sound is working, so.
Ian, apologies, you should be able to turn your video on now if you try it again.
All right, perfect. Thanks so much, Sam. Hi, everyone, good evening. My name is Ian Lundey. I'm a director with Nycha's Real Estate Development Team. I want to just start this presentation off with a quick hello from Nycha. We are a partner in this project and we want to make sure that all residents know that Nycha is here and present and listening. But really, we're here to thank you for making the time to be with us tonight. It's so important that we have resident feedback and that residents understand this process and that you're able to hear directly from both Nycha and this team about what the plan is here and what's happening. And also give an open forum for you to ask any questions you have. So thanks to each and every one of you for making the time to be here with us tonight. So before we jump into the real focus and the agenda for this meeting, Nycha always wants to take a step back and for any of you who maybe haven't been able to join some of the previous meetings or are just looking for some general context, speak to how we got to this point, just so residents really understand what we're building off of. So as many of you know, Nycha unfortunately needs a substantial amount of capital to repair Harlem River houses. And really, when we say repair, we're talking about bringing your building into what we consider a decent standard. And to date, Nycha really hasn't been able to do this comprehensively with the funding available to us. We really only had funding in little increments at a time, allowing us to do piecemeal repairs. And the only way to repair a building of this age is to take on a comprehensive approach. So as a public housing authority, we receive our funding through from the federal government. And they really haven't been able to provide us, like I was mentioning, the operating or capital funding for repairs through the Section 9 program. The federal government, however, did create a program that can deliver these critical repairs with vacated long-term funding. And this is our PACT program. PACT stands for Permanent Affordability Commitment Together. And PACT is how Nycha and New York City is implementing the federal program known as RAP, the Rental Assistance Demonstration. RAP was created under the Obama-Biden administration and it allows for housing authorities like Nycha, it allows for housing authorities like Nycha to switch over our funding source from Section 9 to project-based Section 8 vouchers. The conversion over to Section 8 allows us to bring in new funding sources to invest in your development and work with new partners to more efficiently deliver these repairs and focus on the needs of limited houses. It both provides us with additional funding and more capacity to use that money. So the real goal here is that we can unlock funds to complete comprehensive repairs at your development. We're talking about repairs to the apartments, the buildings, community spaces, additional social services, as well as the spaces in which those services are administered, and the broader campus itself, the site, the place where you live. So following the conversion over to Section 8, Nycha will leasing the land and the buildings over to our development partner. In this case, that is the team you're hearing from tonight, Harlem River Preservation. And this team comes on as Nycha's partner. So they are our partner in development and they are going to help us in performing all of the necessary repairs and management requirements as the long-term manager. But Nycha remains involved as the owner of the land and we have oversight for the whole extent of the time. As mentioned, the PACT process allows Nycha to bring on and fund additional services and service coordination at your site. Thanks to the PACT program, we'll be able to enhance the onsite services and better connect residents to the services that they need that aren't offered directly onsite. So a crucial element of PACT that we really want to make sure that every resident understands is that the PACT program, something that Congress has guaranteed resident rights apply as a part of. PACT is utilizing RAP and RAP was an act of Congress. It was an act of the federal government. And through this federal legislation, they have maintained and preserved and in some cases strengthened resident rights from the Section 9 program. So on top of that, Nycha has actually made an effort to make sure we are going above and beyond the federal requirements such that every Nycha resident continues to retain the rights that you currently have. So just so everyone's on the exact same page about what that means, residents will pay no more than 30% of their total household income towards rent. You'll have the right to organize. And the new property manager will continue to recognize your resident association. The resident association will continue to receive funding. And in fact, as mentioned, we will be able to dedicate more funding towards the resident association, in some cases, and the broader social service efforts of the resident association and the resident population. Your lease is going to automatically renew every year. And your household will not be re-screened as part of this conversion. A really great part of the RAP program is that every Section 9 tenant doesn't have to qualify for Section 8 under the usual conditions. You're grandfathered into the program. So there's no re-screening. You are automatically eligible for that Section 8 voucher if you are a current Section 9 tenant. Apologies. Your family members will continue to have succession rights. So they will continue to have the right to succeed you on that lease. And you will continue to have the right to have grievance hearings. So it's just really important that everyone understands that these are critical protections that are all part of the PACT program. But they are also contingent on having a PACT lease. So it's very important that everyone is able to sign your PACT lease because that is how we are able to guarantee those protections for tenants. Another important element that Nycha just wants to emphasize before I hand it back over is that doing a lot of repairs, this is a lot of work, being there are a lot of jobs. And we need a lot of support and a lot of help. And it creates a massive opportunity for investment in your housing. And Nycha wants and is requiring that our PACT partner prioritize residents for those jobs and for those opportunities. So if you have any questions about that or how that might apply to you or your family members, please during this meeting, ask us questions about how you can connect with those job opportunities, if it's something that is of interest to you. So I've been talking for a bit now, so I just wanna thank everyone again for being with us here tonight. We really value your time. We really value your participation in this process and the feedback that we're excited to hear from you. So I will hand it back over to the Harlem River Preservation Team.
Thanks, Ian. So we're gonna go back over to Sayida to now recap the temporary move process. This is something that we have discussed in the previous town hall meeting, but definitely something we'd like to share with you again. Make sure everyone is aware of what's going on at the development. And I'll pass it right back over to Sayida. Sayida.
Thanks, Sam. Okay. To prioritize your health and safety during construction, each household will move temporarily to a vacant unit at Harlem River and will return approximately six weeks later. Nycha HUD and EPA have established safety protocols for lead paint. These rules require each household to be out of their apartment during the upcoming in-unit work. You will be able to move back to your original apartment once the work is complete. To keep you safe from dust and debris that will be produced by the work, we will provide you with a temporary accommodation for approximately six weeks while work occurs in your unit. Your temporary move will be to a vacant furnished apartment within Harlem River that has already been renovated. You may stay with family or friends instead of in a vacant unit, furnished apartment, vacant furnished apartment at Harlem River, if you wish. You will receive $1,000 if you choose this option. Next. Next slide. Okay, your resident rights are preserved. Residents will return to their apartments after the repairs, including a thorough cleaning and inspection. Each household will sign an agreement with Harlem River Preservation LLC, prepared by Nycha and legal aid that further guarantees this right to return to your apartment. Nycha will monitor and progress, the progress of temporary moves and ensure compliance with all HUD, EPA, and New York City regulations. Your rent will not increase as a result of the temporary move or the repairs. Every month, the development team will update the tenant association board on the status of temporary moves, lead-based paint abatement, and general construction progress. Next slide. Your rent will not change as a result of your temporary move or the repairs. Your temporary move will last approximately six weeks. Your temporary move will occur sometime between March 2021 and December 2025. Harlem River Preservation will support you in all aspects of your temporary move. All this support is provided at no cost to residents. We will schedule a one-on-one conversation with each household at least 30 days before their temporary move to answer questions and help plan for individual considerations. You will receive, excuse me, moving boxes, packing tape, and help packing your belongings if needed. You will receive a stipend to cover your out-of-pocket expenses. Thanks, Sam. Sam?
Sorry about that. I was looking for my mute button. So now we're going to pass it over to Tony Savarese. Tony is part of the Harlem River Preservation Team and will be coordinating, him and his team will be coordinating the temporary move process. Tony, if you don't mind, please unmute your mic.
Thank you, Sam, and good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us. As you can see up on the screen, this is just some specific upcoming communications that we will have with you. They're important because, number one, they'll, they'll keep you notified about what's going on. And as you heard, there are some of the ways that your rights are protected throughout this process. So for example, in addition to having, number one, the resident town halls that we've been having, you'll see that, number two, the general notice of non-displacement, we will distribute that to everyone. And that document will confirm that you're not being displaced. It'll give you some more information, pretty much summarizing what we've been discussing at the town hall meetings. That will then also let you know that we will be contacting heads of household to schedule an initial one-on-one interview. And that's where we'll be able to discuss with you individually any special needs that you have, any special requirements as we start to help you and plan for this temporary relocation. And then item number four is important because that will notify you when the anticipated move is going to take place. We will then start to meet with you and prepare and help and support the preparation for the move. Those residents that have special needs will be able to have folks help with packing. And we will then schedule all of the necessary resources at no cost to you to help make that move possible to your temporary unit. And then finally, item number five is important because it'll just, it'll be a document that will confirm that you are moving back, that this is a temporary move, that this is not a non-displacement action. And it's another way that we're ensuring that your rights are protected. Next slide.
Thanks so much.
Thanks, Sam.
Okay, thank you, Sam. I know you're.
Yeah, thanks so much, Tony. So we're now gonna pass it over to Ellie Himmelstein. Ellie is with the general contractor team. Ellie, if you could please talk through the schedule for temporary moves, that would be great.
Sure, thanks, Sam. Good evening, everybody. I also wanted to introduce another team member. Now that we're slowly but surely mobilizing onsite, getting closer to the start date. Ben, another member of LNM, your general contractor, is on the call as well. So what you see is a great representation of the general process of how we're gonna move forward. So 30 days before we're gonna start the work in your apartment, you'll receive a notice. Typically, you'll receive a lot more notice than that. And the graphic on the side of the screen is, again, just a great image to kind of display for you what's gonna be happening. You're gonna be in your apartment. You'll have notice that you're gonna be moving into a renovated apartment for this temporary six-week timeframe. And once we're done with the work, with the work, excuse me, you'll move back to your apartment. And so on and so on, until we complete the work on all 693 apartments. The work in, at every address will take approximately six months, six weeks within your actual apartment. So we'll be working on multiple apartments at once. The plan is to vacate complete building addresses. So for example, if you're at 211M, we would vacate that entire, that entire stair hall, all 12 to 15 units. They'll be moved to, like I said, to a vacant apartment. And we'll do the work, which will take six weeks. And then residents will be able to move back to their, back to their homes. As we get closer to the actual start date, we'll be sharing that overall schedule with everyone. And I cannot stress enough that there will be a lot, a lot of notice and more details to follow. Thanks, Sam.
Thanks so much, Ellie. I'm now gonna pass it over to my other colleague, Judy Gerena, to talk about hiring. There's gonna be a number of jobs that are available at Harlem River that we were really excited to offer to tenants to apply to. So Judy, if you could please unmute your mic and talk through some of the opportunities at Harlem River.
Thank you, Sam. Good evening, everyone. My name is Judy Gerena with LNM Development Partners. We are very excited to provide job opportunities during this project. We will be recruiting for several trades, including electrical, painting, flooring, and general labor. These construction opportunities will be prevailing wage, full-time positions. They will be entry-level. Therefore, you will not need experience to be able to apply. The opportunities will be temporary, each lasting between three and four months for each position. And they will be available once construction begins in early 2022. You will soon see flyers located throughout your property advertising these positions and reminding you of the instructions to apply and where to drop off your resume. In order to qualify for these positions, you will need to be an authorized Nycha resident, which means you need to be on the lease for your household. You will need a valid OSHA 40 certification. If you do not have one, that is okay. We will be offering tree training in early 2022 to provide you with OSHA certification. You will also need proof of work authorization in the U.S., a valid ID, and an updated resume. We have partnered with, sorry, next slide, please. Thank you. We have partnered with Local 79, a labor union, to provide tenants with construction training as well as job opportunities. We have also partnered with various community organizations in order to ensure that candidates are provided with support and can access free training and soft skills, interviewing skills, before meeting with potential employers. We will also have permanent job opportunities available in our property management side for never-indevelopments. And this will include positions such as porters, handyman, and supers. These positions are available now and we are currently recruiting and interviewing. The job qualifications are very similar. You will need to be an authorized Nycha resident, proof of work authorization, a valid ID, updated resume as well. And you will be provided with on-the-job training for the permanent positions in property management. Next slide. Thank you. So if you are interested in any of the opportunities mentioned, you can drop off your resume. We have a Dropbox located at 210 West 153rd Street. And we've provided a picture for you, so you know exactly what it looks like. You can also email your resume at info@harlemriver.org. We will be reviewing the resumes as they come in. Please ensure that the resume is updated and it includes your contact information. If you need any assistance with updating your resume, we encourage you to reach House Reese. They have an array of services, including training. You should definitely take advantage of these free services in order to get yourself ready for, for potential employment at this, at this project. Thank you so much, Sam.
Thank you so much, Judy. So I'm going to now pass it over to Remus. I'm not sure if either you or Matthew will be talking, but to staff from our onsite social service provider, PSS. PSS has been on several, well, they're actually on every town hall meeting. They have introduced themselves before, but just given that we're starting to get very close to the conversion date, we wanted the organization that will be the onsite social services provider at Harlem River to reintroduce themselves and to talk a little bit about what they'll be bringing to the site. So Remus and Matthew, please feel free to unmute your mic and present.
Great, thanks, Sam. Hi, I'm Remus Jason with PSS. We're excited to be working with all of the partners involved with the Harlem River Preservation. PSS is a multi-service nonprofit organization. It's been, been around for about 60 years. We've got tons of experience providing a wide variety of social services and programs and activities and educational activities throughout the city. Our mission is to strengthen the capacity of older New Yorkers, their families and communities to thrive. And you're, we encourage you to visit our website, pssusa.org, to learn more about our organization, as well as, there's classes that you can sign up for even now, as well as other activities that are listed. I'm gonna introduce Matthew Beletti, who's Director of Community Social Services, who will have oversight of the social workers that'll be assigned to Harlem River. Matthew?
Thank you, Remus. Hi, my name is Matthew Beletti. I am the Director of Community Social Services at PSS. And so I just wanna give a quick overview of, you know, how PSS has been a part of a number of different communities across the city in various ways. So we have, for many decades, operated a number of older adult centers, both within the Bronx and Manhattan, that offer a wide range of activities, workshops, trainings, evidence-based classes, and then also meals for older adults. In addition to the centers, we are, we have, we have a program that focuses on the older adults, or sorry, that focuses on the caregivers, people with Alzheimer's or dementia, which is called Circle of Care. And then we also operate two residences that are focused on older adults, both in Queens and the Bronx. The Alberta Alston Houses in Queens and the GFA Grandparent Family Apartments is in the Bronx. Finally, we have a program called Coming of Age, which sort of focuses on the community, or sorry, the population that is 55 and over, who will be kind of aging into older adulthood. So it sort of seeks to, to give them the chance to transition smoothly into that life-change stage. And then finally, we have a larger effort to sort of have our classes across different centers and different neighborhoods, and it's called PSS Life University. So we do a lot of different classes, workshops, and activities that can be done in a hybrid fashion, either, you know, onsite as well as virtually. Next slide, please. And so I want to take the opportunity to, you know, say that we, we have hired one of our social workers who is gonna be onsite. Her name is Eileen Lopez. She started this week and she was onsite with me yesterday. We will have two full-time social workers who will be providing support and programming to the community of, of the Harlem River houses. And they will, and Eileen will, will be sitting in on, on some of the meetings that are happening with the staff team for the repairs that, that are going to be done. She's also looking to develop and then implement programming and various. uh, and various activities once, uh, the new year, um, you know, happens in, in January. So we're excited to, to have her and we're excited to be a part of, uh, the Harlem River Preservation Project. Thank you.
Thanks so much, Matthew.
Welcome.
So I'm going to pass it back over to Saido right now, um, just to talk a bit more about what to expect following the conversion. Saido?
Okay, so the conversion is planned, uh, for next month, December 2021. And we will share more, uh, details about that next month, as well as how you can request maintenance, contact security, pay your rent, and much more. So what will stay the same? Residents will continue to pay no more than 30% of their income. NITRO will still own the land and buildings. Tenant Association will remain a collaborative partner. Tenant Participation Fund continues. Residents must be in good standing to ensure the transition is as smooth as possible and that you have your personal questions or concerns answered. What will change? In-unit and site-wide upgrades, including kitchen and bathroom renovations, abatement of all lead-based paint, landscaping and playground improvements, common area upgrades, plumbing and electrical upgrades, new onsite management team to meet resident needs, new local hiring opportunities for NITRO residents. Sam?
Thank you, Saido. So, uh, finally, we turn to our Q and A. This is our question and answer, uh, uh, our question and answer session. In order to ask the question, there are a few different ways. The first is you can type your question, as many of you have already been doing in the webinar chat. We will either type a response or answer the question out loud, um, during the out loud portion, which we're about to do. You can also raise your hand, um, in this Zoom meeting and Saido will call on you during, um, the course of this session and unmute your microphone so you can ask your question. If you're using a smartphone, um, and you'd like to raise your hand, tap the screen of the Zoom meeting and a toolbar will appear. Tap Participants and then tap Raise Hand. And if you are calling into the meeting using a telephone, you can dial star nine to raise your hand. So with that, I'll turn it back over to Saido for the Q and A.
Thanks, Sam. Okay, great. So we will begin, um, with the attendee list. First up, Colleen Collins. You can unmute yourself and ask your question.
Colleen, you should be able to unmute yourself. Let's see, try that one more time.
Hello?
Hi, Colleen. We can hear you.
Okay, hi. I'm calling about 2850 because see, we keep going over this thing. And every, every month I'm on this thing, y'all talking about rent or security or the little, the housing river one. I called and I spoke to Ms. Walls and I spoke to a lot of other people about 2850. Now, if y'all gonna have a meeting every month and it's about what y'all gonna do to the little project, then don't put them notes on people door that live in 2850 because 2850 should not have to wait for y'all to finish Harlem River One to get to us. We're living rough over here. The elevators don't work, people in the building doing things they ain't supposed to do. We can't get around, our building is too crowded, everybody hanging out, ain't no light, the rats crawling up on the gate. Why we gotta live like this? Y'all not saying nothing about renovating 2850. And I don't care about no rent. I don't care about whatever it is, social, I don't care about none of that. I'm asking you, if these meetings every month is gonna be about that Harlem River One, don't put it on people door in 2850 because we have our own dilemma. We wondering why are we being last to be renovated?
So thank you so much. This is Judy Herbstman. Um, I'm with Settlement Housing Fund, which is part of Harlem River Preservation. So I'll be, um, directing traffic with, um, questions tonight. So I hear you. Um, I, I just want to be clear that, um, everything that we're saying does apply both to Harlem River Houses and to Harlem River Two. Um, and so when CNC takes over management, which is, we're expecting to happen in December, everything that's going to be going on with management will apply both to Harlem River One and Harlem River Two. I think what you're picking up on though is that the construction is sequenced so that we're doing the Harlem River Houses buildings first. And so I want to just, um, call on Doreen to talk about, what changes will be seen at Harlem River Two, um, right from the beginning. And then Ellie, if you want to chime in, um, about any of the construction scope that will be happening in Harlem River Two more broadly, before we get, um, you know, till the end of construction.
I think I can forward this over to Ellie.
Hello?
Because he has the construction lineup for the building and then I'll chime in if there's anything that's missed.
Thanks, Doreen.
Sure. So, uh, first of all, we're, we're well aware of all the issues that are, that are at HR2 2850 Frederick Douglass is, as well. From the roofs to the facade issues, to older windows, to, uh, leaking plumbing, the same issues in the apartments, the elevators. So we've already actually awarded our elevator contract and we've started, uh, the process of getting them set that when we close on the, when we close on the property and get the green light from the, uh, from the development team, we'll immediately start working on shop drawings and start to address those elevators. So that, that will not be waiting any extended amount of time. It'll take us time to actually get the contractor set up, but we, we have a green light on that as soon as we close. So elevator work, at least on one of the cars, because we do it one at a time. Obviously, we, we don't want to leave you without a, uh, an elevator. We'll work, we'll start immediately. We're also trying to expedite work on the security, work on the roofing. We're going to have roughly on day one or prior to that, the existing sidewalk shed is going to be replaced with a new sidewalk shed, better lighting, it'll be safer, and will hopefully enable us weather permitting to start the masonry repairs, which are needed as well. So we plan on doing a, a lot of work, uh, immediately at 2850. Obviously, it takes us a little bit of time to, to get going, but, uh, there's no plan to, you know, to rest on our laurels and, and wait around while the seven buildings at HRH are, are worked on.
Hello? Do y'all know when the renovations is gonna start for the apartments in 2850?
We have, so it's a great question. So we have a provisional schedule, which the development team is, is going over. So we don't have a actual set date. I, I know that we shared tonight that we're starting with the addresses at, at Building Three, which is the, the building along 151st and, and Adam Clayton. But we will, we will share the schedule for 2850 as soon as it's, as soon as it's set. And we're trying to hit as many, uh, units as the same time as possible. One of the, one of the major positives about CNC and the general contractor being onsite and part of the same team is that when there are issues, uh, we might not be able to do a complete renovation in your apartment right away. But if you have a leak, if you have something that's not working, they'll be able to lean on us, they'll share the information and we'll be able to go in and get that addressed in a, in a very quick fashion. Um, and like Saido mentioned, you know, that whole process of how you go in, the new process of calling in, uh, for repairs will be, will be shared shortly with, with residents.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Collins. Next question will be from, uh, resident's phone number beginning with three, four, seven. The last four digits are two, six, seven, eight. You can unmute yourself. Three, four, seven, two, six, seventy.
You should be able to unmute. Not sure if they can hear us.
Okay, uh, we'll come back to you.
Oh, wait, actually, I think.
Okay, go ahead. Two, six, seven, eight. You're unmuted. Two, six, seven, eight. We can, well. Can you hear us?
Saido, we can leave that one, that hand up and try to circle back if you'd like.
Sure. Okay. Um, Ms. Row or Topaz Rose, you can unmute?
Yes, um, so this is my first time, um, and do, um, joining this meeting. Uh, my name is Brittany, um, and I live in 2852 and 2850. But, um, I wanted to know, like, when y'all move, like, when we do, when y'all do decide to renovate the apartments in this building, like, is it the, like, because I'm not too worried because I live with my mother, so I'm already trying to leave. So I don't mind, but it's like, if, when y'all, um, when y'all doing a stipend, like, is it a one-time thing or is it like recurring?
So that's a great question, although I'm sorry to hear that you're trying to leave. But, um, the, the way that the stipend will work is, um, for the six-week move, it'll be a one-time stipend. So it's just for the, you know, the main renovation move. You may have, I guess you weren't on the previous call, but there's, was also a conversation last month about people potentially needing to move for a shorter term for immediate hazard work. And that's different and separate, but for the main six-week move, you would get the stipend one time.
Okay. All right, that's it.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, I guess, I'm not sure how to do this, so Sam, help me out. We should go to the, um, Spanish and Mandarin lines.
Yeah, we can just ask for any questions on either the Spanish or Mandarin line?
Yes, okay.
No questions on the Spanish line?
Okay, please, um, ask them to ask away, I guess, in order.
I think, I, yeah, I think she said no questions, but it was cut off.
We have, sorry, yes, this is Lady, um, yes, we actually have one question, which I will take now on the Spanish line and I will come back to you.
So just, so everyone's aware, we're, we're gonna just wait a second while the question, so let's just give it a second.
My name is Alicia and I am calling from two 11 H and this is my question. When the time that, when the time comes that we will have to move temporarily, are we going to be taking our belongings with us?
That's a, that's a great question. So I'll give a brief overview and then I'll ask Tony to speak in more detail. So the short version is that anything that you, you will not be able to access your apartments during the renovation. So anything that you will need during those six weeks, you'll need to bring with you. Our team is going to support you in packing and in moving your belongings. Um, we'll be providing packing materials, like boxes and tape and things like that. Um, we'll.
I'm sorry, um, Judy, sorry to, uh, interject like this, but, um, the lady that I, um, that asked the question, Ms. Ally, she just needs a moment. She's having a little bit of difficulty hearing, so she's not able to listen the interpretation of your answers. If you could please just give her like one, one minute?
Sure.
Thank you.
Sure, thank you.
Oh, okay, she's ready. Thank you.
Okay, okay. Sure, thanks. So, um, you will need, during the six weeks, you will not be able to access your apartment. So anything that you will need during those six weeks, you will need to bring with you. Our team will support you with packing and with moving your items. Depending on what sort of support you need, we'll have a tailored one-on-one approach. But definitely we'll be dropping off boxes and packing tape and providing movers to move your bed and any other large items, um, and can help more than that as needed. In addition, what you'll be leaving behind in your apartment will all need to be packed up so that the construction team can do a complete renovation. So, um, it'll, everything, we'll be providing you a lot of information, but everything will need to be in boxes, removed from walls. And that's how we'll handle it. So I'll jump in, Tony, to give a little more detail about the support that we'll be providing and also what people will need to do to prepare their apartments.
Sure, Judy. The, the most important thing is that we will give you ample notice, uh, to help you prepare and help you prepare for the, for the, this temporary move. As Judy said, you will not be able to have access to the apartment during that time period, but we will take any steps necessary to help make that easier on you. So for example, if there are folks with special needs that might need, uh, some things brought over to the temporary unit, we can make those arrangements to do that. And we'll work with any of your service providers to, to make sure that happens. In addition, uh, there will be the ability to store any, uh, particular items that you are concerned about. That would, uh, be arranged through us and that would be at no charge to you. So we would arrange for, uh, storage, uh, most likely off-site at, at a, a professional storage facility. And then finally, uh, you may have heard at the very beginning, there is the option for folks, uh, to take advantage of. If they have, uh, uh, the ability to move for that time period, with friends and family, we, we can help make arrangements to make that possible. And also there's an incentive for folks to do that. Thank you, Judy.
Sure, thank you. Is there anything else from the Spanish line?
No more questions for now on the Spanish line.
Okay, thank you. Um, how about the Mandarin line?
There is no question in Mandarin line.
Okay, thank you. All right, the next person with their hand raised, uh, the telephone number begins with two, one, two. The last four digits are thirteen sixty-five. You can unmute. Two, one, two, thirteen sixty-five. Okay, there you go. We're ready when you are. Hello?
Yep, your, their mic, their microphone is unmuted on the, it, it actually could be the same. It might be the same one as before Saido that having, uh, difficulty. So.
Okay, so we'll come back. That's fine. I'll.
We'll leave the, we'll leave hand raised and also for that number, if you're having difficulty, um, with microphone, please also feel free to type your question in the Q and A chat. And if that, yeah, I see that it's going from mute to unmute. So if you, if you're not able to use your microphone, please feel free to just ta, text or type your question in the Zoom chat. We'll monitor it and see if, if we see it come up, we'll also try to answer it that way. But Saido, I think we can, I'll, I'll leave that hand raised, but let's move on to the next one.
Great. Okay, thank you, Sam. Um, the next caller is, uh, Great, okay, thank you, Sam. Um, the next caller is, uh, six, four, six, last four digits end with four, two, zero, eight. Four, two, zero, eight. You can unmute.
Good evening.
Good evening.
All right, I'm hearing that the conversion is gonna take approximately six weeks. Are y'all sure that's how many weeks it's gonna take?
Um, so, a great question. Um, just to be clear, the total renovation is going to take much longer. Um, we're projecting that the total renovation will take over three years, but each individual unit is only going to take six weeks, so you're only going to need to move out of your unit for six weeks. Um, Ellie, can you talk about, um, how you feel about the six-week estimate?
I feel good. Um, we, we, we spent a lot of time going over what we're gonna be doing in the units, and we have a great team supporting us from the developer to the input from NITSHA to the staff that's already onsite, so, um, you know how it is with construction, we, uh, we try and be conservative, we make promises, there are never any a hundred percent guarantees, it's always possible that something could happen, um. It could be a crazy storm, there could be shortages of materials, but uh, our plan is that, uh, we're gonna complete within the six weeks, we're gonna do everything in our power uh, to finish faster than that and get residents back into a beautiful new apartment. Um, so we, we have spent a lot of time on it, and, you know, we look forward to being able to share more details with you, what we'll be doing roughly on a day-to-day basis, the work that's going on in the, in the apartments, and, and, you know, maybe once you see all those steps, uh, people can be a little more comfortable or confident in the, in the timeframe provided.
Does that answer your question?
I'm sorry, Sayed, that one, no.
Oh, they hung up, okay. Um. I thought thirteen sixty-five, that was it, or no?
No.
Okay, uh, two, one, two, last four digits, thirteen sixty-five?
No, I'm sorry, Sayed, that's the one that's, the thirteen sixty-five is the one that has had trouble, we, that has been unmuting and hasn't been able to, to actually speak, so the next one would be, I think, Lalet, you call, um, but yeah, that one is the.
Can you hear me?
Oh, we can hear you, yes.
Yes.
Okay, I'm thirteen sixty-five. So, the whole idea of the six-week temporary move sounds to me like a nightmare. I think I would rather leave my apartment unrenovated, just as it is, I'm sure there's no lead paint. So I believe I have the legal right to refuse the renovation, am I, am I right?
So this is Judy. Um, we know that the moving process sounds really, really unpleasant, and we're going to be doing everything we can to make it as, um, seamless and convenient as possible by handling as much of the logistics. Unfortunately, it is not possible to decline the renovation. Um, one reason, I'll just give you an example, is that we're doing some really major systems upgrades. So we're going to be converting from your existing steam heat to electric heat, and the steam system is going to be going offline. That's just one of very many examples on why it's not possible for people to opt out. Um, we will do everything we can to help with the, to make the temporary move process work for you, and we'll have a one-on-one consultation with our moving consultant to go over all of your specific concerns. We know even with that, that it's going to be very inconvenient. Um, but unfortunately, it's necessary for everyone's safety, so, um, it's not possible to decide that you just don't want to have it happen.
And this is, this is Ian with NITSHA. I will just add that the work that they're going to be doing and the testing that they'll be doing, that is a federal requirement. NITSHA is federally required to have that work done, there, there is not an option, it would be uh, like violating our federal requirements to let a resident stay in place and to not let that work happen. So we, we, we do understand that it will be inconvenient, and we are really going to work to try to facilitate this process and make it work for you. It is, it is definitely a requirement.
I was told by a lawyer that, uh, you know, cannot enter our apartment without permission or without some immediate, uh, work needs to be done. So you may be wrong, I'll check it further. Thanks for explaining the situation better. Thanks very much.
Thanks for being on tonight.
Okay, uh. The next caller with their hand up, uh, McDalia, you can unmute.
Yes, my question is, I know that, um, actually, the renovation is not gonna take place too fast on twenty-eight fifty, but at the same time, we experiencing a dirtiness in our building, is they not really taking care of the building, um. There's no mopping, no sweeping or nothing, garbage is now all over the place. And I'm one of the tenants that, um, I let the NITSHA workers to come in and break into the wall and one of, and two of the closet on the hallway, and to fix a leaking that was coming through the wall. And it's still like two and a half, almost three months now, and they haven't come here to fix it. So I'm thinking they're not just listening because, um, you people are gonna take over the building and do the renovation, and they haven't even make any appointment with me to come and seal those holes. And I've been calling them, and I have a ticket number, too, and they haven't done anything yet.
Thank you so much for letting us know, I'm sorry to hear about that. Um, so two things, one is that until we convert, um, NITSHA is still the property manager. Um, and so we encourage you to continue to go through NITSHA for any property management needs, but to please let us know if, um, there are things that are not happening, and we can continue to work with you and with NITSHA to help get them addressed. Um, I'll, in a moment, I'll ask Ian to talk about that, but the other thing I'll say is just that, um, after the conversion, even though the full renovation isn't happening in each apartment for a little while, um, we'll be, um, our team will be in management as soon as we convert, and, um, but some of the issues, the ones that don't require the full renovation, will be able to take care of right away. And then, um, in terms of keeping the spaces cleaned and working on security, and then individual apartment issues, even if the full apartment isn't going to be renovated for a little while, we'll still work with you to address any of the existing issues, whether it's a leak or um, holes or pests. So just because we're not renovating your apartment right away, we'll still work with you um, and do those immediate repairs to make sure that you aren't just waiting for the renovation for that to happen. Um, but Ian, did you wanna say, add anything about, um, between now and the conversion?
Yeah, thanks, Judy. I just wanna, and thank you for the question. Um, we, we sincerely apologize if there's a repair that hasn't been dealt with, but as Judy mentioned, NITSHA remains the property manager through the conversion, so we are still who you should come to, it is still our responsibility, and it is still on us to try to help repair whatever we can. If you can email, um, the, the pact email, pact@nichah.myc.gov. Um, we will do our best to expedite any treatment or any repairs that, that your apartment needs, just send that email. Pact, if we can drop it in the chat, that'd be great. Um, pact@nichah.myc.gov, and let us know what the repair is and your room number, and we will do our best to make sure that property management is addressing that um, right now, um, even before the conversion.
And just to reiterate, if for whatever reason that isn't effective, we also encourage you to reach out to our team. Um, and we'll also, um, or accelerate with NITSHA.
Okay, um, can you repeat that email again, pack NITSHA?
Yep, we'll drop it in the chat. Um, Ian, can you say it one more time?
Yeah, it's pact@nichah.myc.gov. Thanks, Judy. Be me too.
All right, um, I'm told that there are a couple of questions on the Spanish line.
Yes, we have two questions here on the Spanish line. The first one is from Reyna Mejia. She wants to know when would be the start date for renovation, she is at one five one V building.
Thank you, and that's the big question. Um, so we are working on the schedule um, and plan to be able to share a specific schedule in the coming weeks. Um, we know that we're starting with those five addresses, um, that are, I know people don't know what building number it is, um, but that we're starting with the five addresses that we listed earlier, the two, eleven, E, F, G, H, and J at one hundred and fifty-first Street. Um, and then we'll be sharing the schedule more broadly. Just to be clear, though, um, you know, we'll give people an estimate, but we aren't going to have an exact date until three to six months in advance of a particular building. Um, just because it'll depend a little bit on how construction is going elsewhere.
The second question is from Mrs. Garcia, and she says, currently, I live with my daughter, and she has a job which she won't, she won't, she won't have studying in January. I want to know where do I have to go and who do I need to speak to to find out how I can reduce, lower my rent, since I will no longer count on her salary?
Yes, that's a great question, and I'm going to, all of the, um, income certifications will continue to happen with NITSHA. So I'm going to ask Robert Tassariero to, um, talk about how to, um, do an income certification in between your annual.
Oh, great, thank you, Judy, and great question, by the way, thank you so much. So, uh, after the conversion, uh, as Judy mentioned, NITSHA leased housing, Section Eight Division, will take over all the recertifications, both annual and any interim changes that are required based on any type of loss of income or a, a change in family composition. So if that, uh, is the case for you, uh, in January, uh, you'll reach out to NITSHA either through the Customer Contact Center, which is the seven oh seven, uh, number, or the NITSHA portal, uh, that Section Eight uses for all Section Eight tenants to do income recertifications, transfer requests. So we'll give that information after the closing, so that you know what to do, uh, in the event you have a change of income or family composition.
Thank you, Robert, and just to make sure everyone understands, Robert works for NITSHA, um, in the leased housing division. I'm sorry, I didn't introduce earlier.
Thank you.
Okay, are there, are there any other questions on the Spanish line? No?
No, no more questions on the Spanish line, thank you.
Okay, thanks. So we'll go back to, um, the attendee list. Uh, telephone number beginning with two, one, two, last four digits, three, six, four, nine. You can unmute.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening. Hello.
Hi, this is twenty-eight fifty apartment four G. A lot of problems is going on in here, and it seems like that we might gonna be taking care of for a long time. You know the bar in your closet that you put your hangers on and hang your clothes? Well, mine came completely crashing down on the floor, my clothes is all over the place. I have called several times for this, and nothing has happened yet. The bar is still sitting down on the floor.
Thank you. So I just wanna be really clear with everyone that even though the full renovation isn't happening for a little while, you know, it's going to take us time to get through each individual unit in each individual building, we will still be responsible and handle repairs. Um, so, um.
You're not being responsible.
I'm sorry?
It's, it's not being responsible because I haven't called in there several times to get this bar picked back up when I could put my clothes away. It's still sitting on the floor in my closet.
Um, and, and so, I don't know if you're calling NITSHA or our team, um.
I'm calling seven, one, eight, seven, oh, seven, 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 one.
I'm sorry, I don't recognize the number. Can someone tell me which number that is?
Yeah, Judy, hi, that's the, uh, NITSHA Customer Contact Center, so, again, um, while the resident is still on the public housing, that should be property management, uh, taking care of those repairs, uh, so a work order ticket should have been created, uh, through that seven oh seven number.
Got it, okay, thanks, Robert. So basically, what's happening now is that NITSHA is still the manager, and so that number is going to NITSHA, and NITSHA hasn't been able to handle the repair that you're requesting. So in order to elevate that, you can either email the, um, pact@nichah.nyc.gov email address, or you can also reach out to us, and we'll, um, try and work with NITSHA to get it prioritized and get it to happen. But once we take over, um, the management, you'll be reaching out to our team directly, and they will be responsive and will handle repairs very promptly.
Judy, well, well, we, we've helped this resident before, and our team at, uh, PSS will will reach out to, to follow up for that.
Thank you, Matthew.
Also. Okay, I guess they hung up. Um. The next person on the attendee list, uh, is six, four, six, last four digits, five, zero, nine, six. Six, four, six, five, zero, nine, six, you can unmute. Okay, we're ready when you are.
Hello?
Hello.
Hi, uh, excuse me, good evening. My question is, there is an empty apartment in my building right now, and being that it takes, it's gonna take a few years for you to get to this apartment, you know, back and forth, whatever. If the apartment is empty now, is it going to stay empty so it can be renovated for each tenant, uh, individually, one by one, to go inside then when their time come?
Exactly. So all of the vacant units at the development, um, normally will be filling vacant units very quickly. But in this specific case, the vacant units are going to be renovated, and that's where people will be moving during the temporary moves. So any vacant unit will start, um, right as soon as the conversion happens with renovating those units, and then they'll be newly renovated and ready to go for the temporary moves that are beginning in March, and people will cycle in and out of them.
Okay, and the next question that I have is, if you're already packed up and ready to go, do you ac- actually have to wait till they come to your building to renovate? I mean, renovate the, uh, the whole entire building, so you will have to wait?
Yes, unfortunately, um, it would be nice if we could kind of do it where people could pick their own schedule, but the way that we're going to be doing it, we'll do a whole group, um, of apartments that are next to each other all at once. And that will allow us, um, it helps a lot on construction logistics, um, and makes it possible for us to stick with our six-week timeframe. And so, um, everyone will need to move as a group rather than at a kind of selected time.
Okay, and the last question is, can you please explain the rent, how that's supposed to be done? We're still paying the rent for that month, and then we're paying in for the, the next month within, for the two weeks, or how does that work?
Right, the rent won't change. You'll receive the stipend, um, so that will cover your out-of-pocket costs, but um, the rent doesn't change during the time that you're in the temporary unit.
Okay, so if I get, uh, renovated on March and. Okay, so if I get renovated in March and paying for March rent, and then the two weeks going into April, then I'm still paying the rent for April, the whole thing? That's all I wanted to know.
Yes.
Okay, that's it. Thank you very much.
Sure, thank you. Thanks for joining.
Okay, the next person on the attendee list is Jania Redgill, and I apologize if I mispronounce your name. You can unmute.
Redgill, T-H-R-E-A-D-G-I-L-L.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, awesome. Um, hello, everyone. So this is my first time on the Zoom meeting, but I had been to the first initial meeting that I had when this was first started. And so I missed quite a few things, obviously. But I see this is very important because I just want to know about the moving status. And so, one, is this going to happen after the holidays? Because I don't want to get all into, because I know you keep saying a few weeks, a few weeks. And I did hear that you say that we will have a 30-day notice. But I just wanted to just have clarification on that November, December is fine for families. And so 2000 and January, or whatever, we'll, we'll start then?
Yes, great question. We definitely don't want to be the villain in a Christmas movie. So no one's going to be moving in November or December. And the first moves are actually going to be starting in March. We'll be taking over management as soon as we convert, which we're currently expecting to take over in December. But the moves aren't going to be starting until March.
Okay, got it. Awesome. Okay, and then my second question is, is that I've been here for a few years, and to my understanding that a three-bedroom up in, up in Harlem River 2, there's no three-bedroom in the small Harlem River. So how would that affect for people that live in a three or four-bedroom if there's no higher apartments, more, more apartments in the logo and in Harlem River 1?
Yeah, it's a great question, and it's actually been one of the most complicated parts of logistics for us. So for households that are currently in a three-bedroom or a four-bedroom, they'll need to move into one of the vacant three- or four-bedroom units. And we'll need to work with each individual household. There are, I think we put this in the materials last time. There are some households that are in a three- or four-bedroom unit that could, from a household composition perspective, be in a smaller unit, so a studio or a one or a two. And it is possible that during the six-week move, they will need to be in the smaller unit just for those six weeks. And then we'll go back to their original three- or four-bedroom unit. So it will be based on the NICA occupancy standards and individual accommodations that we need to make based on the specifics of what's going on in that household. But you're right to note that there are very few three-bedroom and four-bedroom vacancies. And so that part will be a little bit more complicated.
Yes, because I have almost like a grown son, and then I have a little son, but then I have also daughters. And so if that's the case, I mean, like, then we, my daughters and I will have to sleep together in one room. And then my sons will have to crunch in orders. I just want to just make sure that what I'm aware of upon moving, and I don't want to be surprised, you know?
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, surprises are bad in this case. And we'll be working with you well in advance of your move to understand what your specific household needs and to make sure that the planned temporary accommodation works for you.
Okay, awesome. Okay, then, and just making sure that, so there, I, I, because at first I thought that there was some, some talk going around like, hey, you know, if you, if you, if you let them move you out, you're not coming back. So I was very skeptical, you know, about, about, about this whole thing going on. But, you know, I'm giving me a little bit more clarity, so that's really, really great. Because, you know, I'm listening, you said that, you know, with our preserved rights, that we're going to still be able to come back to our homes and everything. And so that'd be, that's, that's awesome to just, just to know that we're not just being displaced and that it's not being taken away from us upon this agreement. And, yes.
Yeah, no, I, thank you for calling that out, because I think there's a lot of misinformation out there. Everyone will move back to their original unit. This is not to displace anyone. There's going to be the temporary move agreement that was developed by Legal Aid and NICA that specifically lays all of that out. And then after the six weeks, you'll get to move into your renovated apartment.
That sounds, that sounds really, really great to me, and I just want to make sure that the 30 days before will be notified, we're not just spontaneously like, hey, you know, and, and everything, you know? I mean, not to be funny, but NICA has a tendency, it's the city, to kind of do what they want and, and just, you know, like, hey, we here, you know, or, or we not here, you know? So I just want to make sure that I'm on, we on one accord, that when it's time for us or for myself as I speak, but for all of us being that it's all a move, that we are, you know, notified ahead of time on 30 days with the boxes. Because, I mean, I thought it was going to be like right now, kind of when I was told about a couple of weeks ago, and I didn't start packing at all. And, and then when I was told like, well, they're going to put you out, and I'm like, well, I ain't packing anything, I'm not going to lie. You know, because that's my being skeptical. So, you know, I'm glad that I came onto the Zoom just to make sure. And I just hope that when we come back and that the scaffolds are down. The scap was been up for a very long time. It gave shade in the summertime, and it gave warmth in the winter, you know? But it needs to come down. I don't know why that they up. And like the other tenant said, it's so many other things that needs to be done in this building. This, this, this building, 2850, is a very diverse building. We're talking about old people, young people, blind people, all, all types of people, you know? So elevators, hope that everything's just brand new. And, and it's worth just coming home to, you know? And so that's what it is. Other than that, though, I, I, I'm all aboard. Oh, I'm sorry, one question. So the beginning, you said with the Section 8 voucher, right? You said that we all entitled to the Section 8 as long as you was on Section 9?
Yes. Ian, do you want to answer that? But the short answer is yes.
Okay, because at the beginning, when, when they first had the initial meeting, the people explained that it was still like you had to put a bid in for a lottery, how you like had to do many years ago. And because it was a federal building, a lot of people gave up the Section 8 to move to a federal housing, you know, opposed to the third-party HUD. So I just want to make sure, you know, that, that I understand that that it's entitled to it, it's not a lottery. Like, if I don't get picked, then I'm not going to get a Section 8. If I choose to get Section 8, then that would be my choice. If I turn it down and I'm going to stay, then I turn it down. Is that correct for a tenant?
No. So this is, this is Ian with, with NICA. So you are automatically, as part of this conversion, you are guaranteed a Section 8 voucher. So if you have, if you're currently a Section 9 tenant, you're automatically guaranteed a Section 8 voucher. You don't need to apply, you don't need to kind of win the Section 8 lottery. You don't need to go through that process. By signing your new lease here, you will become a Section 8 tenant. So there's, and I want to just reemphasize what Judy mentioned, there really is no displacement with this part of this program. The tenants who are tenants today, there will be a temporary move to facilitate construction. Then you'll come back and, and move into your unit as a Section 8 tenant. So just want to emphasize, there's no kind of re-screening. Everyone is qualified as a Section 8 tenant, but that you do need to have that Section 8 lease signed to be a Section 8 tenant. So this will now be a fully Section 8 building, and so everyone will need to have a Section 8 lease.
Thank you, Ian. Okay, Ms. Redgill, I hope we answered all of your questions. I'm going to be a little random now, but Mandarin line, do we have any questions on the Mandarin line?
There's no question in Mandarin line.
Okay, thank you. Let's try Tatiana. You can unmute. Tatiana, you can unmute.
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, thank you so much for having us on the call this afternoon. I placed a couple of questions in the chat, and some of the questions that I had was in regards to the hallways. I know some of the previous folks that spoke on the call had asked in that previously, but what does the renovations in the building look like aside from the actual apartments?
A great question. So I'll ask Ellie to speak about it. But I think the, the short version is that we've shown pictures of the common area and the exterior renovations on previous town halls. So would highly encourage you to go to our webpage to see the recordings of the previous town halls and see the pictures there. But Ellie, can you talk a little bit about the scope outside of the apartments?
Sure. Going from the outside in, there'll be new building entrances with the secure entrances, basically controlled access, key fobs for all the, all the residents, cameras on the outside of the building, cameras in the stairwells and, and hallways, new LED lighting, and new painting, new flooring in the case of, of 2850. And I'm just trying to think if I'm missing anything. New apartment entry doors, new windows throughout the property, which, you know, obviously includes outside of the apartment and the comment where it impacts hallways as well at, at HRH. And new roofing, addressing the complete building envelope, all your mechanical systems from, you know, heating, introducing cooling. Basically, if you can, if you can think of it, we're, we're addressing it.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you so much for clarifying that. I definitely appreciate it. And I did, this is actually my first time being on a chat with you guys. So I'm really excited to be able to see that the renovation, they're going to come to life after this wait time. But I have heard from different tenants and, you know, from other folks as well that the six-week period may not include the full scope of every renovation. So I just wanted to be clear, is this going to be the entire apartment? Because I've heard some common areas like the bathroom, the kitchen. But would this include like the full apartment, including like closets, the removal of the gates, the windows within that six-week period?
That's also a great question. And I'm sorry, my toddler has joined me for a moment.
Hello.
Want to say hi? No. So there are a few things that won't necessarily happen during the six weeks. Ellie, can I pass it back to you to talk about the pieces that won't be happening during the temporary move?
Sure. Essentially, just two things, although they're not small. Primarily windows, and depending when, when your apartment is being renovated, it could be that this will happen simultaneously. But windows, which are a long lead time item, and the mechanical equipment, the, the new heating and, and cooling unit that we'll be putting in every, every apartment. But otherwise, everything that you mentioned, bathrooms, kitchens, flooring, painting, new lighting, closet shelving, hardware, doors, that will all be done in that initial six-week timeframe.
And also, this, this is Sam. I just want to, here, let me turn my video on. See if I can make that work. I'm having my fair share of technical issues today, but it doesn't look like I can turn my video on. But I also just want to clarify that when the additional, the, the work, if, if there's any work that, oh, there I am on video, any work that, as Ellie said, might, doesn't occur during the, the six-week renovation period. And again, that is just when, it's really just windows and also heating and cooling systems in some apartments. The work that, that work that would occur later on would not require you to move again. You, you do not need to move out of your apartment again. That work can be done while, while you're in place. It will be scheduled with you, and you do not need to move again. This, the six-week move is the move for the, the vast majority of the renovation work. And anything that needs to happen after that will schedule, schedule with you directly to find a good time and, and will make it happen while, safely and cleanly while you're in place.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much for clarifying. And I have one additional question. I've seen a few pictures from previous, all like flyers and things that were posted within the building. But just as a cosmetic question, rather, what are the colors for the cabinetry that we'll be receiving within the units? Because I've seen some photos that look gray or white, but I'm not sure if some of them will be brown. Could that be clarified as well of what we can expect?
Sure. I'm sorry, Ellie, one more time.
Yeah, sure. It's a, it's a grayish color, a grayish woodgrain finish.
And pretty soon we'll have the first units renovated, and then people will be able to see it in person. You know, as a kind of model unit. But right now, it's, you know, just from the pictures, which I know it can look a little bit different depending on the printer.
Yeah, and also, I, I would also just say that, that the, the very, very first rendering, the very, very first picture that we displayed, this was way far back, back in, I'm going to say, December of 2020, showed a very early version of like what the kitchen could look like. And since then, on subsequent town hall meetings, since we've been, you know, gone through the planning process and continued to build out the project, we finalized the cabinet selection. So, you know, Judy mentioned on a previous, and I just realized that I'm on video again, apologies. Judy mentioned that a lot of this stuff is, we presented on, on a number of these, these, these topics, and we really encourage you to go to our website, harlemriver.org. We record every single one of these meetings. And there, there are pictures of the current view of what the cabinets look like. I believe it was in the, it may have been in the April Town Hall meeting, March or April, some, one of those. So if you go back, you should be able to see a picture. If you can't find it, you can also stop by our office at the, at the old library, and we can either show you on a computer, or we can provide a copy of the slides that we used for that town hall. And, and you can, can see an example. And then finally, as Judy said, we will be completing a model unit. So these are the units that many of them will be used, these vacant units will be used for temporary moves. But they'll also serve the purpose of allowing tenants to actually see what your apartment will look like once the renovation is complete, and this is something that will be ready within, within the near future. And we'll, we'll communicate with you about that soon.
Okay, thanks, Sam. So we're almost at time. And so we'll allow one, maybe two more questions. I'll leave the last two up to Sam. But Michelle Grant, you can speak. You have your hand raised. Ms. Grant?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, go ahead.
Good afternoon, everybody. This is for my residents. I'm the TA president, Michelle Grant. If any of your residents, until the time that RAG comes in, if y'all need repairs done and it's not being taken care of, please give me a call with the ticket number. So y'all could get your pen and paper, so I could give you my telephone number. Or you can go in the management office and they'll give it to you. So if you're ready, my telephone number is 718-812-4615. So Sayida, you can repeat that again, and I'm done with the question.
Okay, yes, everyone, her number is 718-812-4615. Okay, Sam or Judy, do we have time for one more question, or would that be it?
I think we can do one more.
Yeah, let's, let's do, let's, it just hit, it just hit 7:30, so let's do one question. I know that there are a lot. And also, I want to say to everyone, we know that there are a lot of questions. This is a very complicated process. Please keep asking them. We have a number of ways you can reach us, both visiting our office at the old library, calling our number. You know, there's, you know, reaching out to us over email. We put our email address and phone number on all of our pieces of communication. This renovation process and this project as a whole is better. It, it, the actual result is better when we have feedback from tenants and we're talking to you and hearing from you. So please, despite the fact that we couldn't get through all the questions tonight, we will have another town hall, first of all, and please keep asking your questions in all the other ways that you can. And yes, Sayida, please feel free to call on one other person.
Okay, so to be fair, we're gonna, I'm gonna keep this random. I hope I didn't call this person before. I don't know. Area code 347, the last four digits are 7924. You can unmute. You can unmute, seven nine two four. Okay, um, so we'll try one more.
Hold on, hold on, just, I just wanna give it one more second. I, I just found the number. They should be able to unmute. Seven nine two four, can you hear us? Okay, Saeda, maybe we'll try one other one. It doesn't sound like they can hear us.
Okay, uh, two one two, oh god, uh, ten eighty nine? Two one two, ten eighty nine are the last four digits?
You should be able to unmute, ten eighty nine?
Praise the Lord, everyone.
Hello.
Praise the Lord, hello?
Oh, I praise the Lord, everyone. Everyone hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, wonderful. That's a blessing to hear. I am calling and the questions that I have is, number one, those that have air conditions, cuz I'm one, that have some. And when you start re-renovating uh, the windows and what have you, to put in the heating and the air condition um, that you're gonna be putting in, where or what happens with our air condition?
Great, that's a great last question. Um, so I will turn it over um, to Ellie to talk about the new um, heating and cooling system. Um, because you will not need your window ACs anymore.
Your air conditioner, I, I think if I understood your question correctly, so your air conditioner is your air conditioner. Um, you can, we'll, we'll leave it with the resident. If you'd like us to dispose of it, we can dispose of it. But if you wanna hold on to it, by all means, you'll no longer need it. Uh, because we'll pre, we'll be providing a new heating system, which will also provide cooling. So we're very excited about that. I know some residents have air conditioners, some don't. Um, now everyone will have an air, air conditioning and heating system, which you can control. So sometimes your apartment is too hot, sometimes it's too cold. Now you'll be able to regulate that. This is scope that we're very excited about, but uh, your, your air conditioner is yours. You'll, you'll do with it as you, as you please.
Wonderful. And the next question I have is, um, same as some of the other tenants have spoken about. I have put in a couple of complaints and NICA does not respond to any of them. Number one, the door lock and the buzzer is not connected to our building. And that's not good for, cuz I'm disabled and I'm elder. And that's not good for a lot of assets that is elder and disabled. So they don't respond. I even put in, uh, for my cold water side on my kitchen, I mean, on my bathroom side, uh, faucet side, nothing has been done. And I put in this quite a few times, um, last month, month before that, and month before that. NICA has not responded and I pay my rent, they have not responded. I mean, this is wrong. I really don't like it because they shouldn't respond. Cuz you all haven't come in as yet and they should respond. Because you all, you've been telling us in the past town hall meetings, anything we need to be fixed, call NICA. And that's what I do and been doing and they still don't respond. It's like the workers don't work anymore. They get paid, but they don't work. So that's another uh, thing that I have about NICA.
Yeah.
This is, this is Ian with, with NICA and I just wanna say, we, you know, I sincerely apologize. Some of us are, are here and, and we do wanna help and um, if you can, I, you know, there's I think three options to make sure that, that we get to. The first is if you can email pact@nicah dot NYC dot gov, which we dropped into the chat with your name, number and uh, like a room number and the ticket number. We're gonna do our best to expedite. If you wanna, in addition to that, as Judy mentioned, reach out to our partners here, Harlem River Preservation. And then as you, you just heard from the, the tenant leader, Ms. Grant, you can also call her with a ticket number. We, we are all gonna work together to make sure that the issues you have are addressed because NICA is responsible before this conversion and it's important that we, that we get to that.
So, um, thank you, Ian. And it's, we're really, obviously, that's not the situation that anyone wants. And um, would really encourage you to follow up with us and with NICA and with um, the TA. But um, you know, as soon as we do the conversion, um, it, NICA won't be responsible for management anymore. Um, and we can really assure you that it will be a very um, responsive and um, effective management team. So, um, I don't know, Saeda, did you wanna close us out?
Um, sure.
Okay.
Yeah, no prob, no problem. Uh, thank you everyone for attending. Um, your questions were great. Um, all of the, the contact info uh, was put in the chat. You can call us, leave us a voicemail, send us an email, email NICA. Ms. Grant has given her phone number. We are here. Um, uh, ready, willing and able to help and everyone have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you so much, everyone.